Sunday, May 1st in the City of Braden City Council Meeting. Minister of Labor, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Here.
Chesak.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry.
Stingline.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Anybody care to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Stunek, second. By Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Let's move on to number five, which is the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by a roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek, any discussion? Hearing none, Minister of Labor, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that, uh, the consent calendar is adopted. Item six is presentations. Six A is a presentation by the center. Come on up, state your name and address, because we're on TV and not everybody knows you.
All right, thank you. I'm Kathy Tusa. I'm 14075 Firewood Drive in Baxter, but I'm here representing the center tonight.
And I'm Nick Rindell, 8101 Buffalo Creek Road, Braden, representing the center.
All right, thank you for allowing us some time to come in and update you on what's going on at the center. We do have some new programs and classes and activities this year, but tonight we're here to talk about our fundraising activity, which has been going on for about 15 years. Some of you probably remember or have heard of, maybe you're too young to remember, Rudy Hillig. Rudy was very instrumental in really getting it going. It started out with people just digging up and splitting their perennials in the spring, but Rudy got us started planting seeds and so on and so on. So anyway, it's been going on for about 15 years. Our sale is in mid-May, and it's sort of a community event. We have use of the greenhouse at the old high school farm on Highway 25. We start our seeds at the center. About mid-March, we move them to the greenhouse. Mid-May, we bring them all back in and have the sale. The Wild Bird Seed Store donates seeds to us, crowing power in their, um, Power Energized, whatever their...
Operation Roundup.
Thank you, Operation Roundup. They provide some funding to help us cover the cost of pots and seeds and potting soil. We've got about 40 members involved, and I mentioned, we started there with the seeds and then move everything to town just the day before the sale.
We usually have at least six varieties of peppers, 13 varieties of tomatoes, over 14 varieties of herbs. We have coal crops, a new term for some of us, but that's the zucchinis and cucumbers and pumpkins. Total, over 1,000 tomato plants and then about that many pepper plants, plus all the other perennials that we dig. This winter has been challenging, this spring, I say, because of late spring, so we don't know what we'll have for perennials yet, but we hope to be busy the next couple of weeks.
We also have flowers, single packs, multi-packs, hanging baskets of wave petunias, the Black-Eyed Susan thingy that has a name that I can't pronounce, and lots of flowers, everything from Alyssia, Alyssum to Zinnia and in between. And we have herb gardens, small herb gardens, tomato herb gardens, floral gardens, and then we have hostas.
And coleus.
Yes.
Each year, we try to do something a little different, just, I think, for the sake of those involved in it, to keep our interest in. And last fall, in an effort to enhance our sale, offering for sales this year, we started in a project as an experiment. Each year, in the previous years, we've started coleus from seed, and as a result, the plants tend to be rather small, and we have no control over the colors and varieties of plants that we get. But last fall, several of us had amassed total of 24 different varieties of coleus from within our own gardens, and we decided it would be fun to try and start coleus from cuttings. So over the course of the winter, we started, and through about four generations of cuttings, we developed enough plants to produce 250 cuttings of about a dozen different varieties. There are six different varieties there, and we tried to get as much different form and color as we could. So we've sold some of them at some of our events. We had bingo last, yesterday, in fact, and we sold about 25 plants there, and so it's something people enjoy, and...
And we do, too. And this year's dates are May 18, 19, and 20, and on Thursday and Friday, we're open from 7:00 to 5:00, and 8:00 to 3:00 on Saturday. Come on over, you know where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Any questions from the senior, from the board?
Sure.
Anna White did well.
Miss, yes, thank you, chief. Chairman O'Day has a question.
Can you eat those? Okay. Just wondering. They look delicious. You could.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Butter, put them in butter.
Item 6B is a presentation of the Trunk Highway 210 Loom Park Pedestrian Bridge Feasibility Report, submitted by our City Engineer Public Works Director, Dan. Anything you'd like to share with the council on this discussion item?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So council authorized using ARPA funding to complete a feasibility study of a potential pedestrian bridge over Highway 210 at Loom Park. SRF was hired for the task. The city had a project management team comprised of council, park board members, and staff that assisted with direction. Over the course of the spring, as SRF developed the feasibility report, at this time, SRF has completed the feasibility report and will be presenting some of the findings tonight here for the city council. SRF also presented the draft report to the park board at their meeting last week. Casey Black here has been the project manager for SRF, and he'll be helping present the findings.
Thank you. Come on up, Casey, state your name and address, because we're on TV and not everybody knows you.
Casey Black with SRF Consulting Group out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. Our firm has been working with Jesse and staff to put together the feasibility report for the Loom Park Trail Bridge study, and we'll give a quick presentation of it. The full report, I believe, was in your packet, but we will go through some of the highlights and answer any questions. Our purpose and findings, we'll just give a quick overview. Setting up the purpose was to look at the crossing locations, alignment alternatives, connectivity and land use impacts, and then costs for construction and funding opportunities to continue to move the project forward. Out of these findings, we did estimate a construction cost ranging for the trails and the bridge, aesthetic allocations, which may be considered for the project, some of the utility impacts that would be associated with the work as well, and then also outlined some information related to potential contingencies and inflation, given that our numbers are shown in $2023, but funding would be a few years down the road if grants were made available. We also looked at grant opportunities that may help move the project forward, did go through a list with staff on what those opportunities are, and are working with them now on selecting some which may be most appropriate to put together funding applications for. Our alignments focused on three areas, south of the approach, our south approach, and then the mainspan over Highway 210, and then the north approach and land impact specific to Loom Park. This may be a little difficult to see, but this is our overall graphic, which really ties in the work that is going on in 2023 on Highway 25 for improvements by MINDOT with the bridge replacement. In 2026, 210 will be on, in reconstruction through this area, and we also know the Cayuna Lakes State Park Trail Association would like to see Cayuna Lake State Trail developed further to the east. So this tries to capture some of that information, as well as the existing bite connect work within the city, and how this project could tie in from Highway 25 north along 10th Avenue, and then on the south side of 210 to a private parcel just south of Loom Park, and then crossing over Highway 210 into the park. This would then connect to a trail that is planned in 2023 as part of the Loom Park improvements. Zooming in a little bit, this graphic is rotated, so north is to your right, but again, we are showing that at-grade trail from Highway 25 along 10th Avenue to Highway 210, staying at-grade until we get to about 13th Avenue, and then we come away from Highway 210 a little bit to cross over the drainage way that exists in that area, probably with an RCP or small box culvert structure if needed, and then we approach the bridge ramps. This graphic is just a zoom in of that area of the bridge. Again, what we see in dashed yellow is few, planned future trails or improvements in 210. The solid yellow is the at-grade trail. In blue, we've got our ramps up to the mainspan bridge, and then in orange is reflected that mainspan crossing of 210. We also looked at the right-of-way impacts available here. So we've got city right-of-way and MINDOT right-of-way for that eighth-grade trail along 10th Avenue and Highway 210. There is one private parcel impact on the south approach, and then obviously some impacts to Loom Park as well, which is owned by the city. So as a part of that right-of-way review, we did look at that private parcel to the south and estimated what may be needed for permanent easement or a land take for the permanent structure. And then also, what's bounded in green is some of the right, construction easement that would be needed for temporary access, contractor areas and material laydown and storage areas. Looking at utility impacts, we have worked with Braden Public Utilities with the overhead power. That is the most obvious impact or conflict at the site. There are some solutions that seem relatively workable, including pole raises to just raise up the wires rather than having to go to a buried condition, but if a buried condition were needed, that is something that's feasible also. That line also is backed up such that the contractor could ask for some temporary outages of that system while they were setting some of the main truss or doing work right around the area. BPU also operates a water main that cuts through the park, and that'll be shown on the next graphic, and then there's a billboard on the south side of Highway 210. We've reached out to MINDOT to see if that's in their right-of-way by permit or by easement, but one impact that would just have to be addressed again by construction. And then there's also a storm sewer system that crosses through Loom Park. Both that water main and the storm sewer may be hard to see in this, but they are in yellow going underneath the blue on the north side in Loom Park. Those are the two utilities we assume impacts would be needed. That water main doesn't necessarily need to be relocated, but may need to be cased, just so that we've got protection there for driven pile and foundations. The storm sewer appears to catch drainage on the south side ditch, convey it across, and then into the drainage way. That one, we may take a little bit offline and bypass, adding one or two small structures and just rerouting so it is not in conflict with any of the substructures. The orange mainspan really just is impacted by the overhead power lines operated by BPU on the north side of 210, and then coming south for that blue ramp, there is a billboard pretty close to the turn or where that maintenance drive access comes off of 210 to the south, right across from Loom Park Road, which would go away. There is a power feed to that for some light. That is something that could be maybe repurposed and used for bridge lighting if that was brought into, into the structure. We also took a look at some of the environmental impacts for this. There are wetlands primarily on the south side of the project that would be impacted. Really, any use of that private parcel to the south for this project is going to impact wetlands. Future stages, we'll do delineations and then look at permitting and the mitigation needs associated with it, but we did take a look at what the permanent impacts may be relative to the mapped wetlands which are available. When it comes to the bridge types we are proposing, there are a few different superstructure types. First is precast beams. Those are very advantageous for long, straight spans, so we are proposing those in those longer blue approach runs. And then as we turn into the mainspan, that upper graphic kind of shows it. You've got two close piers. That is a kind of horizontal curve that takes you into the mainspan truss. That's the cast-in-place concrete slab, and then the mainspan is a 210-foot prefabricated truss for this project. We have put together a few renderings. They don't differ in layout and approach, because the way we want to, are recommending using the land, it does not change, but what does need some consideration is just future maintenance and ownership of any of the aesthetic treatments that would be incorporated into the bridge. The DNR may be a funding partner or may potentially own the bridge at the end of the project if it was incorporated into a state trail system. The DNR doesn't use paint systems on their projects, also do not include lighting, so they're pretty minimal. That doesn't mean agencies couldn't come in with some painting systems, they would just have to have a ownership and maintenance agreement with the DNR for any cost participation on long-term maintenance. The second rendering shows a black painted railing with that unpainted truss, and then there certainly are many options to paint the truss to match the railing in black as shown here, or a different color to make it stand out. Lighting options are widely available, either at pedestrian level or some that can, can backlight the structure. We haven't tried to capture those, but future renderings will probably be available and part of any public engagement in the next phases of design. That's kind of a quick overview of the project in general. We'd certainly open it up to floor if there are any questions.
Any questions for our engineer? Any questions? Nope, it appears not.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We will move on to item seven. Seven A is Personal and Finance Committee Chair, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five items, the first of which is to reclassify Richard Berry from an intern to a CSO, and the motion is to reclassify Richard Berry back to a community service officer effective April 28, 2023. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
All right, the next item is to consider public utility department recommendations, and this is a big motion. The motion is to approve the appointment of Mr. Todd Wicklund to the Public Utilities Director position effective May 2, 2023, at his current wage and to continue his fully-paid health insurance, to approve the elimination of the BPU Superintendent and Finance Director Secretary positions effective immediately, and finally, to approve the creation of a new BPU Finance Manager position or appropriate title, subject to the job title and compensation information from Flaherty and Hood, and further to authorize initiation of the hiring process for that position. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
We had a subcommittee work on this with some members of the, a member of the council, staff, and some members of the Public Utilities Commission. They went through the hiring process. The PUC has already met on this and recommended the hiring of Todd, and these three things are all three of their recommendations, and this vote is to just go along with what they're recommending.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. I believe it's just a regular voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up was a discussion of the 2024 capital equipment and facilities budget, and if you, well, you already did, of course, you read your packets and looked at everything, so you noticed the fine spreadsheet and information put together for us to see where the 2024 capital is looking right now compared to where it did a year ago, and some changes have been made, some have moved things out, some things have come into 2024 that are a little bit more expensive, but review that. If you have any questions, I can get you Connie's email address after the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions of Chairman Johnson on the capital budget? Nope, please proceed.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Next up is discussion of a response from Lakes Media Collaborative. Once again, President, this was just discussion. I suppose Lakes Media Collaborative feels they have replied to us. I don't know. I don't know if I agree with them, but what we're going to do is have staff go back and get some information on the letter that was mailed to us and probably considered on their end a response, and we'll figure out what we're going to do going forward at a future And then the final item on our agenda is discussion of right-of-way tree removal, and the motion out of committee was to go with option three, recommend the city budgets for tree, for removal of right-of-way trees in 2024, and ISO move.
Any discussion? We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had, the staff had three options that we could have went with, which was remain leaving the right-of-way trees responsibility of the budding property owner, two, have the city start removing the trees immediately this year as we identify what trees need to be removed, or start doing it in 2024. We thought it was most prudent to push it to 2024 so we can get the money in the budget so we actually have money to remove trees that we don't have the skill set or equipment to remove ourselves.
Any further discussion? Chairman O'Day?
Just wondering if you guys spoke about the smaller trees that we were told staff is able to take care of this year without affecting the budget?
We briefly did, because anybody watching at home, if we tell you to remove your tree this year, just wait until next year and we'll do it for you, right? So anything we can do, if there's something that needs to be removed, we'll, we'll get it figured out this year, but we don't have money in the budget for it. So most trees can wait a year. There's nothing that's real that pressing usually that needs to immediately be removed.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. Any further discussion? I'll just make the comment like I did last time on this, and I'll vote against this. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. That motion passes.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item 7B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chair, Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had six items on our agenda tonight. First one, we get to talk about lights again. This one is specifically regarding light pole height in the general commercial zoning district, and motion coming out of committee was to approve, recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending section 51548, outdoor lighting, with one change by leaving the general commercial district in 2D, and recommend staff to bring this proposed ordinance to the next city council meeting as a first reading. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
So this, from what I understand, this is, this is keeping the general commercial district in the group of districts where the lights, light poles are essentially 13 feet unless they are on the interior and properly encased, so they're not spreading light into other budding properties.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item was a potential alternative closure routes for CLC 5K Mental Health Awareness Run. Motion coming out of committee was to authorize and allow for closure of East River Road between Laurel Street and College Drive if the event organizer wishes to change the route to utilize this alternative run route, and ISO move.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
This is just in case, the floodwaters do not recede by Saturday, so that the run can still go on. They would just be running up and around the, well, East River Road to Laurel Street and back around Fifth.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Third item is event street closure application for the Corpus Christi procession, and motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application, and ISO move.
And a motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item was a discussion on a stop sign request at Rosewood Street and 15th Street Southeast. We discussed the proposal or the request as it regards to these types of requests in general. Our engineer actually showed us a couple of videos that helped to explain maybe some misperceptions about stop signs and their uses and their purposes. In general, when we look at that intersection, we don't have any history of accidents. We don't have any issues that are coming out of it other than this request, and we do have a stop sign there that we're not even 100% sure if we put it there or not, because it's not even on a regular stop sign pole. But in the end, we did not recommend adding any stop signs at this intersection. We did speak about maybe adding in some paint for marking the shoulders, making that street feel a little more narrow as you enter the park, and we're, for now, leaving the stop sign that is a mystery on the power pole as you exit the park on Rosewood.
Any questions? There's no motion? Any questions of Chairman O'Day or staff? Nope, please proceed.
Thank you. Next item was a request to award improvement 22-10, Graden Avenue Outfall Replacement, and motion coming out of the committee was to award the improvement 22-10 to contract to DeChantel Excavating in the amount of $51,971, and ISO move.
We have a motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
So a lot of the neighborhood storm drainage comes down Graden, and as most of you know, Graden is a hill on both sides, and a lot of water comes into here, and then it drains to the north of Graden into a wetland area, and we have a large corrugated pipe underground that is failing. I don't know if it's due to just old age and rust, but the ground is actually starting to show that it's collapsing, so it's not something that we can just leave alone, and we got to fix it, so we picked the cheapest one to get it done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Our final item was a review of classification of nonconservation tax forfeit parcels. There are three parcels listed. I'm not going to say all the numbers for them, but we did recommend concurring with the nonconservation status of parcels that are listed, and so that may be, they may be placed on the county tax forfeit land sale, and ISO move.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Item eight is unfinished business. This is a committee resignation from the Planning Commission by Teresa Woodward. Is there a motion to accept with regret?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
A second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight B is a call for applicants. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President. The following applications are available on our website, www.cibrader.mn.us/boards. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Library Board, one term expiring 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, still five terms expiring 2024. TAC, one term expiring 2023, as well as the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have two open spots, one on the Parking Commission, uh, two on the Parking Commission. The first one to expire in 2026, the second one to expire in 2024, as well as one on the Planning Commission to expire in 2025. Item nine is new business. Item nine A is consideration of a conditional use permit for a recycling facility at 1021 Madison Street. Mr. Kravik, is there anything you'd like to bring us up to speed on this agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Green Forest Environmental Solutions applied for a conditional use permit to operate a recycling facility at 1021 Madison Street. recycling facility at 1021 Madison Street. They do recycle various grades of paper and paper-like products sourced from greater Minnesota area and surrounding states, and do not accept drop-off or local collections for these materials. The property is currently operating as a recycling facility for these paper products. The property owner was unaware of the need for a conditional use permit. When we did notify the property owner, they have been very cooperative with the department on all required submittals and contacted the fire marshal and building official for inspection of the property. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and considered this request at their last meeting on April 19th. The commission voted unanimously to approve the conditional use permit with six conditions as presented by staff. These conditions are primarily the result of inspections from the fire marshal as well as the building official. Condition number one is require a code analysis prepared by a Minnesota licensed architect for the facility to be submitted to the city of Brainerd within six months of approval of the conditional use permit. If the code analysis shows a change of occupancy classification, the facility is to be brought up to the requirements of the 2020 Minnesota Building Code within one year of the code analysis findings. Indoor diesel tank storage must be removed, or must be moved outdoors within four months of approval of the conditional use permit. All other requirements of the fire marshal must be corrected within one month of approval of the conditional use permit. All paved areas must maintain a 20-foot wide fire lane, and the required fencing around their storage facility must be installed within six months of approval of the conditional use permit. And I can certainly answer any questions. The applicant is also here.
Sure. Any questions of Mr. Kravik? Any questions of Mr. Kravik? Yep. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed in the conditions, they didn't have anything about parking or parking unattended trailers on the street or any of that. Are we not going to put that condition on properties in the industrial park? We're just confident the new ordinance will solve any problems?
So I know we are working through a revised ordinance right now, as I believe is a first reading tonight for trailers parking on the street.
Because Madison Street's ground zero of that problem.
Yep. So it could be added to a condition here, if council would like to see that as an added condition to this particular property.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to see that condition added, that all unattached trailers be on the private property and not on the street, but...
Thank you. We have a motion to add the condition number seven, that all...
Second.
Unattended trailers?
Unattached trailers, I think, would be the right, don't just leave your trailer out there and unhook to a truck.
Thank you. And we have a second by Chairman O'Day. Any discussion on the, just on that last little bit?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cheswick?
What's, do you have any timeframe at all included in that? I mean, like five minutes, five hours, five days, anything at all? Not, not at all? I'm just concerned about that. Because, you know, somebody could attach it, pull away from their trailer for just a half hour, and we could potentially cite that as non-compliance with the motion.
Yeah, my, my motion would call that non-compliant parking of a trailer in the public right-of-way, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cheswick, you have the floor.
May I ask a question of our, Mr. Kravik about that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Do you see a potential there for a failure to comply with the conditional use if we just say blanket statement, no trailer at all? I mean, for any time at all? And I mean, I'm not against it, I just would like to make sure we're not going to create a problem for the, the owner of this business with somebody needed to use a parking area on the street for minutes, perhaps?
I don't believe it should be an issue. I know the applicant is here. There, I think, were some complaints that were directed more maybe towards the engineering department or police department from trailer parking at this one. From review from staff this spring, it doesn't look like it's been as much of a problem. I know winter was specifically a potential problem. The trailers have been parked off-street in the parking lot, so I, if that condition was put on, I don't think it would be potentially a major issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cheswick. I, I, just, Mr. O'Day, Chairman O'Day?
I think, I was going to say kind of what, what James had to say. When we were reworking that ordinance, I think what we came to a conclusion was just for the, the winter months for snow plowing, that was the main reason. So if we, if we add that to this addition, just from, what was it, November 1st through April?
That's how the ordinance later on for consideration is, November 1st to March 31st.
I think, I think maybe matching with that ordinance would be the easiest way to solve what we're talking about right now.
This motion by Mr. Johnson is in addition to the condition, it is not dependent on the time of the year. So, just so you know, whatever ordinance we come up with, this is going to be a condition of this, conditional use. So, Chief Stunek?
Do we not have an ordinance in place now that you can't park your trailer on the road for more than 48 hours, and it has to be moved? And wouldn't that in somewhat cover this?
We do have that, and that's the ordinance that's under, under scrutiny right now by staff. But Chairman Johnson's motion, which has been seconded, would, would require no off-street parking of unattached trailers, period. If I, if I'm understanding it correctly?
No on-street parking.
Yeah, no on-street parking of unattached trailers. So if this passes, that, it's not going to matter what the ordinance is, they cannot have unattached. I thought it was, Mr. Cheswick was talking, I would presume if there was any kind of timeframe at all enforcement would be difficult. Because you, I mean, what are you going to do? Have the, have the trailer police down there timing? It would be tough. Any further discussion? And this is just on, on condition number seven. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. So now we're back to the request for the conditional use permit with the seven conditions. Any discussion on the, on the whole thing?
Well, I'd move to approve it. We didn't have a motion on that one yet.
Right. I was just...
Oh, you want discussion before?
Well, we, we've let everybody discuss, and Tiffany's had her hand up, so...
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I, and I know this council loves discussion, so...
Well, I'm just going to make the motion to...
You can't make a motion. Oh, yes, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, okay. Yep, go ahead.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the conditional use permit with the seven conditions.
Okay. Second, Johnson.
Okay. So what you had to say was, okay, was that. So we actually have a motion. We have a second. We've got seven conditions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up is item nine B, a first reading of proposed ordinance 1549, amending sections 1200 and 1205 of the city code, sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages in public places. And this would be, City Engineer, Public Works Director Dean, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So staff's been able to put together a proposed ordinance that does revise sections 1200 and 1205 of the city code. That concerns sale and consumption of alcohol in public streets, parks, and other public places. The ordinance was based, crafted based on the meetings and comments received by both city council and park board over the last couple of months. The city attorney has also reviewed the ordinance, has been, that has been prepared for the city council for a first reading. So staff is requesting approval of the first reading of proposed ordinance 1549, noting that a vote to dispense of the actual reading must be unanimous. And in addition, requesting council call for a public hearing to be held at the May 15th council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions of staff on this proposed ordinance, first reading? Any questions of staff? Then we'll look for a motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1549, an ordinance amending section 1200 and 1205 of the city code, and to call for a public hearing May 15th, at the May 15th council meeting.
So move, Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stengel, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes unanimously. Next up is nine C, a first reading for proposed ordinance 1550, amending section 1310.05 of the city code, on-street parking of unattended trailers. Mr. Dean, again, you're up.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So like we referenced earlier, so this is a follow-up to a discussion item at the last council meeting. Staff presented some of the issues that have been brought to our attention, some of the difficulties that maintenance has during the winter season and related to unattended trailers that are left on-street. So it was generally supported at that time at the last meeting to present a proposed ordinance that would revise city code 1310 concerning parking restrictions. This ordinance would prohibit the on-street parking of unattended trailers between the months of November 1st through March 31st of each year. Should a contractor or other business require parking of a work trailer on-street while performing work at a property, they would be required to fill out a no-cost right-of-way permit for city staff review. So staff is requesting approval of the first reading of proposed ordinance 1550, again noting that the dispensing of the actual reading must be unanimous. In addition, requesting council call for a public hearing to be held at the May 15th council meeting.
Thank you, Engineer Dean. Any questions of our staff on this ordinance? Chairman Johnson?
Mr. President, I guess I have one question. Like, say, somebody who lives in town, is an over-the-road trucker, is home for eight hours in December. Is he not allowed to park on the street outside of his house? If he doesn't have a driveway big enough, he's just not allowed to spend that eight hours with his family? Or how, how do we see that?
Mr. Kravik?
Yes, I'll add to that. I, I think that would probably, it could, could go under an unattended trailer, but there's also certain-sized commercial vehicles, I think over 26,000 pounds, like, that would apply to that as well. So there's certain commercial vehicles that aren't allowed to park on the street as well.
Oh, they already aren't? They just do...
In residential areas.
Okay. So this wouldn't make them any more illegally parked? They're still just illegally parked?
That's correct.
All right, cool.
Any further questions of staff? Any further questions of staff, Mr. Mayor?
I'm just reading through this a couple of times here, and it still strikes me as potentially causing some issues. No unattended trailers or trailers actively hitched or connected to a towing vehicle. Does that mean trailers that are attached to vehicles? That tow it. That tow it? Well, I understand that. That would be what, that would be what hitched is.
Yeah, it looks like unattended and attended.
It appears to me that it is unattended and attended. So here's my concern here. From November to March, you could not pull up to your house with a snowmobile trailer and go inside to your house? That, to me, seems like a mistake. I, I know what we're trying to get at here, but there's not a lot of room for exactly what you talked about in the other instance, is somebody gets out, they go inside for 10 seconds to try and take care of something. It is illegal to park your trailer on the street. I have more of a concern in residential than I do in any other part of the town. And actually, quite the opposite, I have a lot of concern in industrial. I just, I want to make sure that we're, we're, we're coming to an agreement as to what exactly that means. Because to me, that reads as that at no point at any, at any time are you allowed to pull your vehicle over with a trailer on it in the city limits of Brainerd.
Anybody from staff able to answer?
So I can revise that language for the second reading, to clarify that it is only unattended trailers that are not actively hitched to a vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything else? Any further questions of staff? So, anybody wish to take a stab at the, a motion on the first reading? Anybody?
You're talking about with the change? Or is that...
I, I don't know. I think you would have to do the first reading as is, would you not, Mr. Attorney? And then come? Or can we make the change?
You're still on the first reading. Nothing has occurred at this point, so...
All right.
Add the word "not" in there. Trailer is not actively hitched. Just want to add that in as part of the motion. I think you're fine. You're still on the first reading.
Okay. You heard the attorney? We can make that change. And the change would be no unattended trailers. How about we just get rid of, or trailers actively hitched or connected to a towing vehicle? We just strike that? Mr. Dean? You crafted this, yes?
Yes, sir. Yep, we can strike that out.
That would solve the problem? You understand what I'm saying, Mike? Just strike that line. So you could make that motion?
I will make that motion.
All right. So we have a motion to hold the first reading by O'Day, a second by Cheswick, as presented, but striking or trailers actively hitched or connected to a towing vehicle shall be, okay, so that's it. That part will be struck. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. President, are we...
Discussion?
Yep. Yes?
I just...
You're up first. You asked first.
What, are we also dispensing with the reading?
And dispensing with the actual reading? And calling for a public hearing on May 15th? And this has to be unanimous or... Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. President, I don't want all of those words read to me, so I will vote in the affirmative on, on this motion, but I would really like to see, I like what we started there with removing that one line, but I'm also worried about, like, U-Haul vehicles. Are we telling people they're not allowed to move into Brainerd in the month of November? They can't, like, park a U-Haul outside of their house for six hours while they unload their good, like, Brainerd's closed for business November 1st, call us in April? So I would just like to be very clear in the wording there that there are some uses that are allowable, and it just doesn't, I, I'm not understanding it if it, if it is there. So although yesterday, I would really like to see it come back much clearer next time.
You okay with that, Mr. O'Day? You understand, understand that, Mr. Cheswick? Mr. Dean?
Okay. And actually, I agree.
You got a question about the...
Well, I think we talked a little bit about maybe what would clear that up is a permitting process, which I don't know if that's...
Get your permit to move to Brainerd.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know if we want to have a permit for every single job site that's going on in the city during the winter. But I will say it's probably less than what's going on in the summer, and this wouldn't affect anything going on in the summer. So I don't know what the perfect answer is there, but I think we should, we should visit it again and, and solve it a little bit more...
If this motion passes, we're visiting it again.
Yep.
On the 15th.
Mr. President?
Mr. Johnson, did you have...
I'm good, thank you.
All right, Mr. Cheswick?
Maybe staff could use discretion in those instances that we're speaking about? Maybe?
I understand what you're saying, Jeff, that probably comes with discretionary is that's really tough on staff. So one person sees it one way, one person sees it another. The clearer we could write it... May I make a suggestion? I might suggest we pass this to move it forward with the understanding of where we want to go, not to set us back. And if we don't like it when it comes back in two weeks, we don't vote it. We thumbs down it. Does that make sense? We all kind of, I think we, I, at least I feel I understand what Mr. Johnson's, and agree with what Mr. Johnson's saying, but I also want to, I want to get this moving forward, and I think we're close enough that we can craft something. Fine-tune it for the second reading. Mayor Bedeau?
Just one last question. Is anyone else concerned about the parking of trailers in the industrial park on the road in the summer? Yes?
Unattended.
Unattended.
I would prefer not to see it, but it is in, it is an industrial park. I don't have a huge problem with trailers being on the street for short amounts of time.
And this has no zoning prohibit, um, prohibitions, is that a word? I don't think it is.
Prohibition.
Yeah, prohibitions. Well, you bring up, you bring up a point and this doesn't address that. We can move forward with this, it is the first reading, or we can scrap the whole thing. We have a motion, we have a second. We can defeat it. Okay? You brought up a good point, but there might be more. So maybe, maybe we are pushing it too fast. Any comments on the motion in the second? Which does not include anything about a summertime industrial park, anything? Okay, so if we vote for this, if it's not a unanimous vote, does it fail, Mr. Attorney? Or do we just have to read the whole thing?
Some kind of...
It's actually not that long, James.
I don't know, I just remember last time that Mr. Kravik... Send me a birthday card.
This one would be Jesse, though. I think Jesse has to read this one.
Jesse has to read that. Okay. Well, we can do two, we can do 10 motions. We can do as many as we want to, but... Oh. Right, could we do that? Could we split this? Okay. All right, staff is recommending that we split this into two motions, one on the first reading and one on dispensing with the actual reading. So... I'm going to ask the motioner, Mr. O'Day, and the second, Mr. Chesek, if you would mind that we would split this and we'll vote on the first reading first.
I would make, fine by me.
Is that okay? Anybody object to that? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and this is only on the first reading with those words removed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. We're looking for a motion to dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second? Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, let's try a third one. To hold the public hearing on this, uh, I believe it's the second meeting in May, is it not?
May 15th.
Two weeks from today.
Yep.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second? Second by Chesek, is there any discussion on the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. If you have thoughts on those industrial trailers, I would suggest you give them to Mr. Dean for the second reading, or maybe it does have to be another, another motion. Next up is Administrator Bergman on a joint workshop with Public Utilities.
I can be brief. The BPU Commission has asked to have a joint meeting with the City Council on Monday, June 26th at 6:00 PM. Couple of topics would be upcoming capital projects as well as the reorganization of the department.
Any objections to Monday, the 26th at 6:00 PM that's here in council chambers?
To be determined.
To be, to be determined, place to be determined. Any objections to that? Hearing none, we'll look for a motion to approve Monday, the 26th at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
26th.
26th.
So moved.
Motion by Chesek? Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Item 10 is the public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Would like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. So we will open the public forum at 8:23, and look and see if there is anybody online or in the audience that wishes to bring something not to the, uh, not on the agenda to the council's attention. I'll ask a second time. I'll ask a final time, if anybody in the audience wishes, or online wishes to bring something forward to the council's attention that's not on the agenda. Hearing none, it's 8:23 and 48 seconds. We will close the public hearing, move on to staff reports. On to my left, Chris Hubert, our HR Director, our Fire Chief Holmes, our Attorney Lango.
Nothing, thank you.
Community Development Director Kravik?
Nothing to add.
What did you do with James? Jesse Dean, our City Engineer Public Works Director?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So a couple quick ones. If you've noticed, the stakes over on College Drive, we are planning in the next couple of weeks to get a lot of trees planted on College Drive, re-establishing the median, and then as many as we could afford with this year's budgets to get along the boulevard. We'll still have to continue for the next couple of years, re-addressing the boulevard trees, but at least the median will be re-established. And the potholes, we continue to get calls for them. We are aware that there are many more potholes yet to be addressed. Unfortunately, we are running out of our mix that we have available. So staff is doing our very best to prioritize the biggest and, uh, on streets with the most traffic, uh, to address those first. But we will continue to work through as long as we have the material, and once we run out of the material, uh, we'll probably have to be on hold until the hot-mix plants open up, and we can get some more material to continue the patching process. But rest assured, we are aware there are still more potholes to be done, and the crews are still out working on them as we can.
Excellent. Finance Director Hillman? HRA Director Sharpton Tier?
Nothing to add.
Sean Strong, ITGIS?
Nothing tonight.
Our future chief? All right, Administrator Bergman?
Nothing to add.
All right, we're going to go through the mayor's, the mayor's reports, all of them.
Oh, I got two tonight. First of all, I want to just say Jesse, Jesse Dean, did an amazing live broadcast of the progress that was happening of the road construction in North Brainard. And it led me to realize that I think the rest of staff needs to start doing some live broadcasts. And I think it could get really interesting. I, I wouldn't mind seeing some HR live broadcasts. The one I really want to see is Sean at IT. I want to see live broadcasts of some, some snooping of people's internet usage. Connie, nobody wants to watch Finance. Nobody wants to watch Finance.
Gabe does.
Gabe already does. He's sitting behind Connie's shoulder poking at it all the time.
Where was this live broadcast?
Anyways, Jesse, you put it on Facebook, did you not, or was it on our own website? It was on our website. But I'm, I'm being, actually being serious, especially with construction. It was very informative, and I think it's a great way for us to connect with the public and let them know, hey, here's what's coming up. So, yeah, just, you know, put a little feather in your cap and see if maybe you want to get involved, the rest of you. You can get kudos as well. All right. Also, I've got one more item. I was asked to do a proclamation tonight. We did not get it into the packet or anything. It will be for May 4th, but I'm going to read that proclamation to you, and then we'll get it out to the public as well. Uh, this is in recognition of May 4th as a day of prayer and fasting in Brainard. Whereas throughout our country's history, citizens may, of many religious and beliefs... Oh, that is, I'm, I'm already messing it up. Many religious beliefs have turned to prayer for strength, hope, and guidance. And whereas the First Amendment of our United States Constitution protects the rights of free speech and religious liberty, including the right of all citizens to pray, and whereas the United States observes an annual National Day of Prayer and Fasting on the first Thursday in May, to recommit to the core freedoms that define and guide our country, and to celebrate that we may exercise our convictions freely, regardless of faith or belief, if we choose so. Therefore, I, Dave Bedeau, Mayor of the city of Brainard, do hereby proclaim May 4th as a day of prayer and fasting in the city of Brainard, and invite resident, Brainard residents to pray and fast consistent with their own faiths for our many freedoms and for the benefits of our city, state, and country.
They rent the donut sales at the center.
Yeah. Well, that's...
Maybe they believe fasting is even...
You can save them. I've eaten them three, four weeks. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
End of report.
All right, we'll move on to council member, uh, council committee member reports. Item 13, uh, I will start and say I have nothing to add. We'll turn to Mr. O'Day. Nothing to add tonight. Mr. Johnson?